Stable.
Sugar free.
I don't know.
Thought I was getting beat, man.
You playing chief tonight, mate?
I'll see you.
Yeah, it is.
I'd like to call this January 3rd, 2008, meeting of the Coopel City Council to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Shelton.
Here.
Mayor Salee.
Present.
Vice Mayor Davis.
Present.
Councilman Williams.
Present.
All present.
Thank you. If we could all rise for a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for our law.
Thank you. Do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda tonight, Mr. Shipp?
No changes.
No changes. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
No move.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Brings us to our consent agenda, which we have one item. Item two is setting a date of February the 7th, 2008, at 6:00 PM for a public hearing on ordinance 080101, rezoning 55 and 85 Reagan Street from CL Local Commercial to CBD Central Business District. Sponsor Kathy McLean. Does anybody have any comments on that? Seeing none, let's, uh, do we have a motion in a second on the consent agenda?
No move.
Second.
Second.
Have our motion in our second. See no discussion. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
That brings us to our old business portion of the meeting. We have one item. Item three, consider approval of minutes of the council meeting held December the 20th, 2007. Do we have a motion in a second?
No approval.
Second.
We have our motion in our second. Any discussion by the council? Comments from the audience? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. Brings us to our new business portion of the meeting. Item four, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 071236, rezoning 433 Profit Street from RS5 Single Family Residential to CN Neighborhood Commercial. Sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, this proposed rezoning was initiated by Jeffrey Burwell.
It's been going on all night.
On behalf of the property owners. I got, on behalf of the property owners, James and Faye Nelson. As you said, it's located at 433 Profit Street, and this is an aerial view of the property and the current zoning. The property is also identified as parcel five on Tax Map 53K Group H. It consists of fifteen thousand square feet, and is contiguous with RS5 zoning to the east and south, and with CN zoning to the north and west. Mr. Burwell indicates that the, in the petition for rezoning, that the purpose of the rezoning is to allow for the expansion of parking on contiguous property, also owned by the Nelsens, which is located at 425 South Lowell Avenue, and it's this track right here. Here's some photographs of the property. This is the property that's proposed for rezoning, and this is the existing business, which the parking would be expanded onto this, and they do own both tracks. The land use plan shows that this property is best suited for local commercial or low-density residential use. The requested CN zoning would be an appropriate zone for both these land use categories. The proposed rezoning would extend the CN zoning boundary no further east than it currently extends on the adjacent property to the north. According to this property, this is where Mama Rose is located. The proposed rezoning was approved by the planning commission, subject to the submittal and approval of the subdivision plat combining the two parcels owned by the Nelsens and is recommended by the planning department.
Do we have a motion in a second to approve?
Move for approve.
Second.
Have our motion in our second. Any discussion by the council?
Can, can they not use that for parking now, as it is?
No, we're not, you're not allowed to have parking for a commercial business in a residential zone. And this is a separate parcel, and it would have parking on a separate parcel.
What's on that parcel?
There's a, on which one? There's a house located on the one that they're requesting the rezoning, and then they have a, um, tax preparation business on their property.
Have there been any neighbors or people that live in that area make comment?
We had one person make a comment at the planning commission meeting that lives over, off of, uh, South Maple that was concerned about encroachment into the area. And we had one lady that lives in this house was concerned about tree removal. Um, their site plan indicates they won't remove any of the trees. There's a large pecan tree she was worried about being removed.
And the how, the two, the two parcels just to the east, or do they both have houses on them? I can't, or just one? I mean, they're res- single family?
Well, this is, this is where the business is. This is a single-family house on the property that's being rezoned, and there's a single-family house located here. Let me go back to the zoning map. Well, this is the, there's a house on this, and there's a house on this property.
Is it, so is that house gonna be torn down?
No. All they plan to do is just use approximately thirty feet of the property to expand their existing parking lot and leave the house.
I've traveled that Profit Street pretty regularly, and, uh, it's a pretty narrow street. Um, is there any, I mean, will they, is it gonna be bringing more traffic, uh, east on Profit? That could potentially be a problem?
I'd say their business is mostly accessed from Lowell Avenue, and that's where they're, where it fronts, so. Go back to the aerial again. If you're familiar with the Mama Rose, if you're familiar with the building, it's on the corner here, and this would just add their parking right in here.
Okay. It's kind of peculiar, though, that the house actually faces Profit, but the, the long dimension is on Lowell, so it's kind of hard to access, uh, the property any other way except through here. And as James Mills commented, the planning commission was originally concerned about it, but the depth of all the property north of it is CN.
Mm-hmm.
Um, was kind of a protection for the rest of the citizens on Dire Avenue. You can see from the tax map, I think there are three or four, it's actually five, uh, tax map parcels between it and actually, and Dire, whereas there's one which separates the CN zone from Dire on the, on the north side.
Mm-hmm.
Do we have any comments from the audience? Any further comments by the council? Seeing none. All those in favor of the motion is indicated, uh, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Brings us to item five, hold a public hearing and consider on first reading ordinance 071237, closure and abandonment of a portion of the undeveloped right-of-way of Park Street located between 1826 and 1848 Burn Avenue. Sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor, council members, Mr. Robin Meadows, on behalf of John Mark Phillips, has submitted this request that a portion of the undeveloped right-of-way of Park Street be closed and abandoned and made available for purchase to the adjoining property owners. Location of the right-of-way is depicted on the screen. Here's an aerial view with this section of the right-of-way, and as you can see, it's undeveloped. There's a photograph of the property from Burn. It's, the undeveloped right-of-way is located between Burn Avenue and Lee Avenue, south of West Jerry Whitson Road. The portion of the right-of-way request, uh, request of foreclosure and abandonment extends approximately one hundred and seventy-four feet west of Burn Avenue to an alley, and the alley is also undeveloped. So there's a platted alley that runs through here. Based on a survey submitted by Mr. Meadows, the right-of-way has a width of approximately thirty-five feet. The survey also indicates that a single-family residential structure is partially located within the right-of-way, and there's a, this is where it extends off of Burn, and there's a house right here, and the right-of-way actually comes over in here where the mailbox is, and the house is actually, I don't know if I put the survey in here or not. This is the look from the, uh, from the western end of it. No, I didn't have the survey in that. Two parcels are contiguous with this portion of the property that's proposed for closure, and both of them are owned by the, uh, Mr. Phillips. I'll go back to this map. Mr. Phillips owns these two tracks, and Mr. Meadows intends to purchase those two tracks, so if this is closed and abandoned, the adjoining property owners are the same, uh, property owner. The procedure for closure and abandonment of a right-of-way is specified in Title 16, Chapter 4 of our municipal code. They include several standards that must be met, including the submittal survey, which they've done, uh, confirmation, all affected property owners are concurred with the closure and abandonment, and they do. Must be reviewed by the departments. This has been reviewed by our departments, and it's been determined that there are no utilities located within this right-of-way. Also requires the review and approval of the planning commission, approval of the council, and purchase of the property based on a value established by the city manager, or if appraisal is necessary, such must be paid for by the petitioner. The proposed closure and abandonment has been approved by the planning commission, subject to compliance with the provisions of Title 16, and the planning department concurs with this recommendation.
Do we have a motion in a second to approve?
No move.
Second.
Have our motion in our second. Any discussion by the council?
Um, thi- this is not in any kind of, could never be used to, as it looks on the map, where you could actually connect and actually have ingress egress from Burn Avenue. You don't plan to ever do that? That's not in a, in any planning?
We don't have it in any of our land use plans or in our transportation plans, and, uh, like I said, the-
Not any thoughts of, just get in the way of like garbage trucks turning around and so forth, and?
No, let me go back to this view. Now, I'm gonna show you that, this photograph I'm showing is from right here.
Mm-hmm.
This is an apartment complex. Is this photo, and the, this is where the right-of-way is located, and it's their drive, and they actually use this for parking into this apartment complex. They were contacted and weren't interested in, in the, extending the closure on the west way out because they felt like they're using the property for free now as part of their, their property.
Considering the tumultuous experience we had with Polkway, um, I think this really, we need to be careful about how we deal with this. I, I'm concerned that, um, I mean, should we not, should this not be closed and abandoned all the way out to Lee, between Lee Avenue and Burn? And I'll see how we can-
Well, all property owners were contacted. These, the property on this end indicated they were not in favor of purchasing, but were not opposed to it being closed to the part that was requested for closure. And we've had it reviewed, and none of the departments believe it's necessary for the city to keep, and the planning department concurs with that.
Yeah, that, that's my concern. If, if it's been checked, that the city does not foresee any reason to keep that.
We didn't even know there was a right-of-way there until this came through, weren't even aware because it's, especially even the alley is, is grown up, and both ends of it are used as driveways. The, here's an aerial view of it, but I'll go back to this map. This right-of-way actually goes all the way out to here, and all this section through here is undeveloped. Not just from here to here, but all the way to here is actually undeveloped.
It doesn't go out to Willow? It looks like on there it goes all the way out.
Right-of-way does, but that portion is, uh, partially built. It's not a city street that's used.
So, does Lee, does Lee Avenue extend all the way to Jerry Whitson?
I believe it does.
Yeah, it does, I think.
It does?
Yeah. But this, this alley is not developed. It runs through here, and this section of right-of-way is not developed. And it's not developed to here either. But neither this alley nor this street right-of-way are developed, and there's a row of vegetation that goes right down through this, which you can see from, uh, from this aerial view. These are, this is all trees through here, and then you can see where the, this is where the alley would, uh, the north-south alley would connect or splits this right-of-way.
That's, uh, I mean, I understand about the alley, that, that's obviously a very small, probably ten-foot, twelve-foot track, but this is a thirty-five-foot potential road. Um, should, should we at least investigate whether, I mean, is that what you're saying? Should we be investigating whether it's needed? Is that what? Well, I mean, ob- obviously, he said that it, it's not in the plan to be used, but to me, it looks like it's, it was at some point planned, or it wouldn't have been there. And I'm just curious if, if we're gonna close it, if nobody's using it, should we just close the whole thing and, and take it off and make it, just clean it off the, off the map? Uh, or are we, you know?
Well, the way we do it, Mayor, is, is that it's sold to the adjoining property owners, and if the other adjoining property owners aren't interested in purchasing it.
We just still maintain our right-of-way there?
Yeah, it's still a right-of-way that they use for free, but we can't force them to buy it. Um, you know, this is the-
Well, I guess, I guess what I'm thinking is that if, uh, if somebody that owns a property between Lee and North Whitney that adjoins this right-of-way thought that they could have better access to their property for one benefit or another, but all of a sudden we've sold the end of the road, then they, they don't have any way of ever using their right-of-way that adjoins their property.
Well, you're talking about a couple hundred feet to get to Jerry Whitson. It's a difference there, but that's-
And I think, I think we were trying to, I think, well, one thing we looked at, too, is coming out off of that road onto Burn, when you've got this triangular area where all these intersections come together, we would prefer somebody to go to Jerry Whitson and then right, and then right on Dixie, as create a, another, um, road there, especially turn left and then oncoming traffic going north on Dixie.
I mean, the intent here, you know, for whatever, if it's, whether it's good or bad, is, what I understand is that if this is sold, Mr. Meadows will, will purchase both these tracks and combine it in here. This is zoned for multifamily, so I think most likely what you'll see is high-density residential development there.
I just, I, you know, I just, I guess just trading very cautiously. I don't want somebody to come back and say, well, you've damaged, damaged me down here because now I can't access, I can't use this. You know, we were hoping that you guys would build that as a road one day, and now, now you're not.
How did the city acquire that right-of-way?
It was platted subdivision.
How, how far down the road is it developed, actually developed?
None of this is developed.
No, starting with the, um-
At Willow.
Yep.
At Willow. How far is it actually developed?
Greg, I don't know of any of that. It's just a driveway right in there. None of it is actually a street.
Well, it has, you said, you named it a street. You said a Park Street? Park Street? I mean, I didn't know there was-
On the plat, no, we didn't either, and on the plat and on the tax maps, that's where the name Park Street comes from on the recorded plat and on the tax maps is where the name Park Street. That's not a city street name. It's, it's what was, how it's recorded.
But the only difference between this and the alleyway that you're seeing to the north up there is it's just a wider alley.
That's basically all it is. It's just an undeveloped, it's an undeveloped right-of-way that, that, when it was platted, was indicated as Park Street. We don't have any information that it was ever, um, built as a street, and if you go out there and look, you-
And we've notified-
Indication of it.
We've notified everybody along that street and, and made all attempts to make it very public that, that-
Wasn't there a sign of, was there?
Yeah, there's, we do adequate notification.
I was gonna say, there were signs all around that property.
There was another incident over by the hospital where we closed part of the road that, you know, there was a situation there, too. I just wanna make sure that we, there was a little trailer over there.
If, uh, Mayor and the council are concerned about it, I mean, there are methods by which we can always buy the right-of-way back. We can do the same thing we did in that.
Well, not if there's a building on it.
I don't know that it's the, if you're uncomfortable with it, then don't, don't close it. I mean, I don't-
For the record, I'm just making sure that we are moving in the right direction in the safest possible way for the taxpayers. I don't wanna be in a settlement conference again.
Well, you're changing people from a through street to a dead-end street.
Potentially.
Well, no, you are.
Well, there's no street.
There's no street there.
But there's a right-of-way, and it's a potential for a street.
But if everybody's been notified and that, there's been no comments, then have we taken the measures, proper measures to make sure that the people were aware of it and that, then the, we can then now close that, and, I mean, I'm assuming that we, I mean, and tonight, obviously, this is public, and this is first reading, so maybe somebody, if they had an issue, I guess this would be-
I'd be, I'd be glad to bring you the notification letters if you need to see those, saying that they were notified.
I'm asking, making sure.
Well, we provide notification to all surrounding property owners on any closure request.
I feel better. That's good.
But I mean, the concern, I have something on the planning commission about, you know, the possibility of, you know, if we ever need a road through there.
Mm-hmm.
And, you know, the best we can do is, is review it by a planning commission, make it compliance with our plans, and have our departments look at it to see if there's any need in terms of utilities for, for keeping it. And I, I grant it, I, you know, it's, it's always more expensive to buy it back than it is to, to sell it, so.
I know at one time that we had talked about on the planning commission, when I sat on there, um, about the possibility of looking at a future land use plan and changing the, changing some of this area north of Tennessee Tech.
Yeah, I mean, that's an area that we, we would like to see changed for some way to do it.
But I, I, I think, you know, I don't think it's that, I mean, I, I don't think it's that big of a deal, just sort of make sure we follow all the-
They build apartments on it, you won't be buying it back.
That's true.
We might be, but it'd be expensive.
Well, you, uh, you won't want to.
Nobody on top of it, that's-
Well, the only thing that we can do is, is cross the Ts and dot the Is, and if we've done that, then, you know, I feel like we can proceed.
Right.
And, um, definitely the intent has been for the city to do the correct thing, and I don't know if intent has a lot to do with it, but at least we're out in the open and talking about it, but I think that if everybody that has been contacted isn't having a problem with this, then I don't see why we can't go forward.
We'd be glad to, to re-notify about the council meeting if you, you know, if you're uncomfortable.
James, I, I think in two instances this year, well, that would be last year, we allowed for the purchase of access right-of-way with the intent that if we needed to purchase it back, we could buy it back at the same rate in which we sold it for. What would be any different about that than this?
Well, I think our attorney spoke to that. I think it'd be difficult to do it in this situation because the intent, my understanding is, these lot, this would all be combined into one track, and they'll probably build over the top of it. The others were involved in a set, you know, they were on the fringe of the existing right-of-way on the side where they'd be in a setback where you probably could buy it back if you needed to buy it back. I don't think that'd be the case there.
Certainly, if this is first reading, I mean, well, there'd be, there'd be opportunity for people to, to voice their concern.
I'd be glad to notify again and have them come to the second council.
I don't think that's necessary. I just-
Well, I, did you notify everybody from Willow to, uh?
No, we didn't notify everybody than six hundred feet, so it wouldn't go all the way out to Willow. So, no, we didn't do that.
Those people are on what they had the right to believe was a platted through street from Willow over to Burn, and anytime you cut off anybody's access, you know, you're just asking for trouble. I would notify every property owner from Willow over to Burn to be here for the second reading, and at least if anybody objects, we can hear it then. I mean, it's better to notify more people than fewer people and be selective. It's just not worth taking a chance over, to me.
Sounds good. If we could do that, I think it'd be-
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. All right. Any further comments or questions? Any comments from the audience?
You wanna make that part of the motion? Is that what we need to do there, or just go ahead and just?
Do we have to do that, or?
Well, you're not, are you gonna be able to notify before the second reading those residents, or should we?
Well, we have two weeks, or you can postpone this, you know, I mean, I, I mean, I-
I, I think I'm fine. If you'll just, if you can get something out the next, you know, first of the week or something.
Or Dan, I mean, he's, I'm more about this than I do.
Well, I don't know about that, but I, I feel like that all of these people who are joining this unnamed street have some expectation that that street someday could go from Willow to Burn, and, and I think all of those people have some property interest in that adjoining right-of-way to have that access open, and I think it's better just to notify everybody who's involved than just the few people right at that little corner, uh, because other people could claim, you know, you've put us on a dead-end street, and we bought this for investment, and we thought someday there'd be a street there. You know, it's just better to notify them and hear the objections.
Would it be proper, then, to, to have the second reading at the first meeting in February? Allow more time?
Well, I, I would feel better personally notifying them now and have the first reading at the next month, and the table this until the next meeting, till these notifications go out, and then just have two readings, the first of, uh, middle of January and the first of February, and aim toward the first of February for the second and final reading. I just think that's a more prudent course of action.
I have a que, I have, I have a question. How are we damaging anybody from Willow Avenue all the way back to where you're closing it? You're not closing the rest of that. That's still there. The only, the only property owners you're affecting, the guy owns property on both sides of that, does he not?
Yes, sir.
And he has four additional ways off of an undeveloped right-of-way. North and south of Lee, north and south of Whitson.
If we were closing that alley all the way from Willow all the way back there, yeah, I could understand the concerns, but we're not closing any of that, so.
Mr. Mills?
Yes, ma'am.
Who sets the six hundred foot?
It's just a standard that we use.
Just a standard? It's not, um?
No, it's not set by code or anything.
Okay.
And it can vary. I mean, we go, we go further than that, but in this case, we felt like, and, you know, it might, it might have been incorrect, we felt like the people who were impacted were from this block to this block, because if this is ever built, you can still go this way or this way, or you can go this way or this way. That's, well, that was right or wrong. That's, was what we looked at.
Where is the, the scale, okay? So, six hundred feet from there would go?
It gra, it basically got this area right in here.
Okay.
And we do it, sorry, you can see the, an aerial view here. I mean, you, this is where the right-of-way extends on. I'm sorry, I don't have it go all the way up to Willow, but it does connect north-south all the way through here to other locations.
Okay.
And that's why we felt like, and again, this property owner, his, he's using the right-of-way right now, and he indicated that, I mean, why should he buy it when he's using it? And I, I understand that. There's really no, but the reason for this one is, the reason for this request is, they'll use this, but they can count this towards their land area, and it gives them more density.
Okay.
More units. You know, does that justify a closing? I, you know, that's-
To me, I, you know, I'm certainly not trying to make a bigger deal out of it, but I, I just, I, I think I would have to agree with our legal counsel that it's better to just overprotect ourselves rather than, than not. And to me, if, if somebody else owned, let's, you know, I, I don't think this is the case, but let's say one person owned every other lot, every other parcel north and south of this, all the way out to Willow, with, in, in the back of their minds, they're, they're hoping that the next council or this council might come along and open that up and take it all the way over to even, uh, north Dixie. And, um, to me, I just, I, I would, I would personally feel better if we didn't at least notify everybody in, that's adjoining that, that, that it's gonna become a dead-end street instead of, or a dead-end right-of-way rather than a through right-of-way. So I guess I can, uh, like, make an amendment to the motion? We postpone the, um, postpone the, well, I don't know that that would be in a minute.
Well, do we just need to withdraw the motion in the, in the second? I hate-
Yeah, just withdraw the motion.
I think that'd be the easiest, cleanest thing to do.
And I don't, Kathy, who made our motion in our second?
Councilman Anderson made the first one.
Am I the, I made the motion?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Then I will withdraw this, my motion.
In the second?
Councilman Williams.
I will draw my second.
Now, and we don't have to take any more action on this because what we've asked you to do is, is go back and notify more people. Uh, do we have to do something?
No, I think you can do that administratively. I just feel, before you do the first reading, if we notify these people, it's just better to be more, uh, inclusive than exclusive, and six hundred feet almost gets you to Willow anyway. It's probably just a few more property owners, and that way we can say we gave everybody notice and an opportunity to object, and there may not be any objections, but-
I doubt there will be.
Well, let me get clear on- Well, let me get clear on what my directive is, is to notify everybody that, that is contiguous with the right of way from Burn to Willow, is that correct?
Ten-mile radius.
Notify an entire, all residents of the city.
That shouldn't be but either four or six more.
I just want to make sure I'm not supposed to go any way north or south from that.
I think anybody that adjoins that right of way-
It's just, that, that shouldn't be more than four or six, four additional people, maybe just six.
From Willow east to Burn.
Between Willow and Burn.
Yep.
That adjoins this, this, uh, right of way.
I believe I understand now.
Uh, you need a motion to postpone this.
I make a motion, we postpone this item until the, uh, second January meeting, uh, giving-
First reading.
For the first reading, yes.
But I thought that, when we withdrew, when I withdrew my motion, that means that it's no longer-
Well, the, the item could die, I guess, for lack of motion, but, um-
We haven't acted on what he's asked us to act on.
Do what now?
Just table it till the next meeting.
Well, I withdrew the motion.
It's better to postpone than to table.
Don't table it, because it takes four, four-fifths to me.
But what I'm saying is, since I withdrew the motion, then-
Right, your motion is, your motion is dead. I just made another motion to postpone this to the second January meeting, and maybe we can get a second on that, and then we'll move forward. We got our motion and our second. So postpone this item until the second January meeting. Do we have any discussion on that motion?
So first reading will be the next meeting.
Yes.
Correct.
What's the date of that, Kathy?
Would be the seventeenth.
On the seventeenth of January, we'll postpone this to then.
First reading in two weeks.
Okay.
Any discussion? Comments from the audience? All those in favor of the motion of postponing till the second January reading, s- to the first reading in January the second, January the seventeenth? All those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Mr. Shipley, I think that you need to send one of us to parliamentary procedure, maybe me, since I'm always the one who's got the questions.
Item six, consider reappointments to the zoning appeals board, sponsor Mr. James Mills.
Mayor and council members, the terms of Sid Gilbert and Tracy Cody expire this month on the Board of Zoning Appeals. Members of the BZA serve three-year terms and are appointed by the council. Mr. Gilbert and Mr. Cody have been contacted and have agreed to continue to serve if reappointed, and the planning department recommends for their reappointment.
We have a motion and a second to reappoint these folks to the zoning appeals board.
I move that these two individuals be reappointed to the Board of Zoning Appeals.
We have a motion and a second on that. Any discussion?
Appreciate their willingness to continue to serve.
Absolutely.
They're good members.
It's not a, it's not been an easy job in the last few years. Um, any discussion, comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Item seven, consider appointment to the sewer appeals board, sponsor Mr. Ronnie Kelly.
Mayor and council, recently Tammy Herman expired on our sewer regulation appeals board, her term. Uh, this board basically hears appeals of the decisions of the director and, uh, of the sewer regulations. We recommend that John Weekly, which is, he's vice president of operations at Genco, be appointed to board. His term would expire in twenty thousand and ten, two thousand and ten, sorry.
Twenty thousand and ten, that is one long term, Ronnie, I don't know if I want to do that to anybody.
That is a long line.
Do we have a motion to, uh, nominate, uh, Mr. Weekly?
Motion.
I move.
I have a motion in our second, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Item eight, consider resolution zero eight one zero one to provide matching funds for the NRTF grant for the Rails with Trails project to be submitted by Putnam County, sponsor Ms. Kathy Andrews.
Uh, Mayor and City Council, as you know, the city has partnered with the City of Allgood, Town of Monterey, and Putnam County to develop a Rails with Trails project. Um, Putnam County will be submitting a grant application to the Department of, um, Environment and Conservation for a hundred thousand dollars. As a requirement of the grant application submission, submittal, um, we have to show where the match, who will be providing the match. Uh, so I recommend that your approval on this resolution, that the City of Cook will provide the match.
Do we have a motion and a second?
Moved.
Second. Or did you already make a second?
No, that's all right.
Vice Mayor had the second on that, Kathy. Um, any discussion by the council? Comments by the audience? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Item nine, consider resolution zero eight zero one zero two to provide matching funds for the LPRF grant for the Rails with Trails project to be submitted by the City of Allgood, sponsor Ms. Kathy Andrews.
Uh, the City of Allgood will be applying for five hundred thousand dollars, uh, in, for, in local parks and recreation fund. Um, Cookeville will u- the City of Cookeville will utilize, uh, part of our two million dollar grant to, to match that five hundred thousand dollar grant. I recommend your approval for, for us to do this.
Do we have a motion and a second?
I move.
Have our motion in our second, any comments by the council?
Important to note, as we said in work session, that the, um, the first one especially was, uh, not taxpayer money. I think that that was-
That is correct.
Yeah, it's not taxpayer money, it was, uh, it's matching funds raised, raised and donated from the community to go toward that, so.
That is correct, sir.
I get a lot of questions about the Rails, um, with Trails, so I'm excited about seeing this move forward.
I think this will be a, uh, huge economic benefit for this community once this thing, I mean, not just Cookeville, but for all the Monterey, Allgood, and Cookeville, particularly in Putnam County, will greatly benefit from this. There are people that travel all over with families and church groups and that sort of thing to bring, to come and, and recreate like this. I think it's going to be a good thing, and we appreciate all your hard work on it, Ms. Andrews.
Thank you.
Any further comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Ms. Andrews, uh, at this time, we have a hearing of citizens and, and/or delegations. Uh, feel free to come and speak for up to three, three minutes. Um, does anybody have any comments? I've opened it up for the council as well, any comments from the council? Alma, you got anything?
No, I'm, I'll just get my book out later and look at it.
Well, I hope everyone has moved those thermostats down one degree. Or have you forgotten about that conversation last night? You're nodding your head.
And seventy-eight.
They moved it down quite a bit more than that.
Even though it's cold, you, you won't, it, it, you, you won't know the difference, you can just move it one degree. And if we all did that, I think we would make a difference.
Would be good. I know I had asked, I don't see Mike Davidson here tonight, but, uh, something I wish that we could do is, um, as a city, um, look at our entire energy usage, you know, find out what the total amount of power we buy from TVA, and maybe monitor that every month, and sort of set some goals to, as a city and as a community, to try to find ways to actually bring that level down so that we don't have to buy as much power from TVA. And, uh, not that, I mean, TVA's great, we're, we're glad that they're in our area and it's helped us, but, but just as a way to save money and, and, uh, as, as Vice Mayor said, you know, turning down the thermostat just a little bit and putting in some compact fluorescent lamps in your places where you can. Every penny saved is a penny earned. Any other comments? Seeing none, I will adjourn this meeting.
Thank you, Sam.
Two degrees.
All right, Sam, I swear next meeting I won't say a word.